Look, please join me in the pledging.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone. The March twelfth. Meeting of the town, Canada go planning board. Everybody looks familiar. Do I have to go through and introduce everything?
You're good.
I'm good. I will note that our. Our older than member is excuse this evening, so he is not here, Ken Schneider. Other than that, we're in. Full, full complement. Okay, uh, we're going to go through the agenda as published. Um, our SOP is. When it comes to your part of the agenda, whoever the applicant is on the podium, make a presentation as to what their application entails. Uh, the board will then question the applicant. And upon the completion of the questioning and answering. Uh, I'll go to the public, anyone in the public. Both here or there, do we have anybody remote tonight?
Um, just letting someone.
Okay. Okay, so. If, uh. Elke would like to talk, she can get our attention and. And talk, and then we'll reconvene as the board. And we'll, uh, make a decision this evening on your application, all things being equal. And that should take care of it, so. Uh. For those who have not been in this room before, we have two exits, left and right. If we have to leave the room, please, uh. Use those, uh, means of, of exiting. Uh, let's see. Let's go to privilege of the floor, does anyone here, uh. Who wants to address the board regarding something? That is not on our agenda for this evening? If not, forever hold their peace. And we'll move on to the, uh, applications in front of us. Uh, there were, there were no legal notices required because we have. No public areas, they're all site plan approvals. We're addressing, so the first one is. Mr. Mark. Uh, representing Daniel Wegman of forty. Four eight eight five County Route sixteen. Uh, he was proposing to, uh, construct a tennis court and associated site improvements. Good evening, Mark.
Good evening, everyone, how are you? Good, good to see you everyone, um. So we're here tonight, um. To, uh, talk a little bit about the Wegman project, it's, it's simply, um. The Wegmans would like to build a tennis court under the property. Um, little, it's a, as you probably know, it's a pretty large site, it's about three point three acres. Um, and it's got about four hundred and forty-one feet in width. Uh, little history for those that don't know, um, we brought the almost identical project to this board. Back in, uh, twenty, January twenty twenty. And, um. It was approved at that time, um, unfortunately, right after we got approval of COVID set in. That year and the whole project got pushed and, um. We did not get it off the ground and I went back to the town and asked about the possibility of doing so and. Um, you know, I was told as I anticipated that the. It was had expired and so, um. We obviously reapplied and. Uh, that's why we're here tonight, uh, so. Um, we have been to the zoning board in February, uh, there was two variances. That were required, one was for, they're a little bit over in lot coverage and, um. And then the other one was, uh, the, the current zoning officer. Determined that the two garages plus the courts, uh, made for three accessory structures and. We need to get a variance for the tennis court as a third accessory structure. So we did, uh, bring both of those in, they were both approved. Um, as far as the project, the, the design goes. Essentially, um, you know, we paid very close attention to the. Shoreline development guidelines for the, for the lake, um, you know, that's, we do that with every project we've worked on. And, you know, the, the project components are very similar to the court itself. There's a small sitting area, um, adjacent to the court, um, and. The, um, you know, there is landscape walls and then there is. Extensive planting and landform work to kind of tuck the court in, and then there's a very extensive drainage system which we've designed. To, um, to basically manage stormwater in a very, you know, a very extensive way. So, um, as I mentioned. The, you know, the, the court itself is, is, you know, the sighting of it was very important, so we, we tucked this. Court behind the, there's an existing woodlot that's on the slope that. I don't think this helps everybody, but there's an existing woodlot below the court here. And, um, the court itself is. Sixty feet above the lake and there's a woodlot that goes right up that slope. And so we deliberately sighted the court behind the woodlot. And it sits way above the lake, so from the lake, it's really. It's veiled heavily by that woodlot, you really aren't going to see it and it's, the, the elevation difference is significant. And then. On the, on the roadside, if you recall, those of you that know the property, there's, there's landform all along the road, you really can't see into the site from the road. And south side of the court where all that dark colored gray is, um, all planting area and. West side of the court, the dark gray is also. Uh, planting on the west side of the court there, so we are. Yeah, even though there's already that existing burn, we really, on the, the road edge, we wanted to really tuck the court in and. In the several projects we brought, brought before this board. Over the last six or eight years on this site, um. Every project has been heavily planted and we're following suit with this one as well, and then the other thing is. On the south side, we are banking, um, earth against the court to kind of, again, build it integrated, same on the west side. Um, so it's really nestled in and very deliberately so to just make it. Disappear, uh, both for, um, what we're trying to do with. This lake property, but also just for the owners, we're, we want to basically tuck the court in, so if not, um. It's not heavily visible, even on the, the entry in, you can see in our renderings that we've done, it's, it's, um, if you can bring those up. Um, you know, we're really gonna. Really try to tuck the course into the landscape, so. Um, the other thing I want to touch on is the drainage system. The drainage system kind of is a, it's a multi-part system, I, I've got a diagram I can show you. So, um, that's okay, so. So the court itself, um, it's going to pitch from east to west, so. It's counterintuitive, we're pitching away from the slope. And the reason for that is we don't want to send water from the court. Down the hill directly, so we're sending it east to west, we're going to pick it up along the edge of the court. With a drainage system that's going to go into. Structure that will bring it into. Basically a big, huge infiltration system, there's going to be twin. Twenty-four inch, hundred foot long. Pipes surrounded by a gravel envelope. Um, so the purpose of that, now they'll be leveled, so they're not moving, conveying water. Uh, they're more infiltrating water, if. If they fill in a severe storm event, um, they will, um, overflow to, um. They'll go to another structure, it's, it's placed within the rain garden, but it's. Actually goes to a drywall, which is a second sort of, um. A second structure which will impale, and then there's a third, um, leg, it makes it. From those large storage pipes to the drywall. And it will then. Percolate to. Another perforated pipe that's, um, it's parallel with the contours of the slope, so. The goal of the, the whole system, there's, I, I should have mentioned, there is actually three. There's three, um. Rain gardens in, in, that are going to pick up the overland flow, so there's one out high. Um, that's picking up strong drainage along the edge of the drive. There are some other ones picking up, um, infiltrations on this side of the road, and then there's a larger one. That is right below the south edge of the. Course, and those are picking up the overland flow and storing it and. The whole system is designed. As a system that will receive, cleanse. Store and slowly release, so that's kind of the goal of the. Of the system, so. Um, and you know, we're doing that because it's the right approach on a, on a project like this, on a lake, and, um. And the other, you know, just the other things, um, I wanted to bring up briefly is. Um, you know, the site is, is a three point three acre site. We, um, it stands, it's, you know, it's one of the more extensive frontages on the lake. It's, there's, as, even as this project goes forward, if it, if you approve it. Um, we will, they'll be maintaining about two point three acres of green space on the property. So, again, just. Our goals have been to kind of integrate this. And make it, um, really kind of. Quiet, um, integrated and. As green as we possibly can around the court and. Following those shoreline development guidelines to the best of our ability, so. That's really the gist of the project, I can answer any questions you have. Walk over any sense you need.
Just to confirm, um, I was on the property the other day. You're not taking down any trees?
Not only the little ones along the driveway that we planted a few years ago to, um. To rework the driveway and then we're going to replant.
Replant. Yes, oh, and. Great system, I was on the board when you. Brought the, brought it last night. It's an amazing system, just want to make sure that there's a maintenance plan with it, make sure that, uh, it's always. You know, if, if it gets filled up, those traps, it's always something that we do to take care of it and.
Yeah, I think, um, one of the great things we fortunately have, um. With this property is there, there, there is a. There's full-time people that are here and the gentleman that, uh, does a lot of the. Care of the grounds is, um, very well versed in this and he's also taking care of the. The landscape which, um. Sam shelters and, um, he will be monitoring this system.
Is there a lighting plan for it?
Well, right now the Wegmans have decided not to do lighting immediately, they, um, said they don't think they are going to need it. If they ever change their mind, obviously we'll come back, um, and revisit it, but. Right now, you know, Karen Costin from Wegmans, um, is in the audience here, um, and, um. He has. Brought the question to them because we wanted to know the answer, they said, not now, um, if we change our minds in the future. So be it, but right now they, they're, they're not asking us to put it in.
There's also, as I noticed in one of the notes, that there's a guardrail.
There is, um, there is a guardrail, um. It's because there's a grave chain, um, from this structure here to the port, um, there, there's a, a little guardrail right here.
Do you know the planned height for them? I just couldn't, I couldn't find more detail on it.
Yeah, that's, that's where it is.
Pardon, you know the planned height for that?
Oh, it'll be thirty-six inches. Yeah.
So Mark, your original. Application back in nineteen. Uh, had a lot of coverage of twenty-six point eight percent?
It did, yeah.
And now we're going to twenty-eight, we did realize you did get a variance from this V H.
Yeah, and one of the things I wanted to mention about that, um, in a little detail about that. When we did the, we did the coverage counts, we, we included everything, so I had a debate with the. Zoning folks and, you know, asked in a P R C meeting, I think it came up, and I was. Um, asking about, there is a, this entire area. Um. South of the garages in the building, all the way down from here is all pea gravel. And there's no distinguish, uh, distinguishing between pea gravel. And crush, crushed compacted stone in the, in the ordinance and even though pea gravel infiltrates water readily. It's. There's no differentiation, so they said I had to include it, so we did include it. It is, it's a fairly significant area, um. But yes, they, the, the coverage is a tad higher than it was, but, um, you know, I think with our. Our management of stormwater, which is the primary concern with, uh, impervious area, we're taking a very aggressive. Uh, stance and approach to stormwater management are, you know, the fact that. If you think about this site, um, at three point three acres. It's, it's not a small site and so. Two point three acres of it are, are green and pervious.
What was the increase in pervious between that plan and this one, where, where, where did it?
Yeah, I can show you what, what the difference was, a couple of little things, um. They, the Wegmans filled this spot here. They, um, put a pathway from to a tram that goes here. Um, and there was a, they, they couldn't, they were having trouble making the switchback turn, so this got wider here during that construction process. So there's a couple of things like that. And, um, that contributed to that area.
So the court didn't get bigger or anything, pathways to the court didn't?
No, it's the same, and you're, uh. This is the same, this is the same, um, none of that's different and, um. In fact, when we bought the project originally in twenty. Twenty nineteen, or early twenty twenty, we, if you remember, we had the, uh, pavilion structure.
Hmm.
And the zoning board didn't care for the height of that, that was, was here, so we, that, that went away. Back in twenty twenty and has not resurfaced, um, so, um, but those are the, those are the little. The little areas that have contributed and again counted every square inch of the, um. Gravel on the far side of the, um. The south side of buildings.
I guess the one concern. That I s- s- I saw from the reviews was from Tyler. Uh, regarding the, uh, force main and pump station. The services, the beach house that goes right under the tennis court currently.
Yes, right, and how, how do you propose to relocate, I think you're kicking it up. And picking it up up in your, kind of sixteen.
We're gonna, we're gonna read, we're gonna not, it's not going to go over the court, I think his observation is a, a good one and, um. Derek Wintercorn from Costage is with us and he is rerouting it around the court as part of this project.
Okay. Uh, the county playing board as usual, uh, recommended. I don't know if they recommend denial on the site plan or the variance. When it came, the variant, I, I know, yeah, okay.
Is, is there automatic denial?
Oh, I.
Uh, any change in existing zoning code, um, in the. R L D is on automatic, it's A R two denial. Uh, I don't think they.
They really didn't have any comment per se for site plan, that, it wasn't exempt. Wasn't one of those exempt ones, but anyway, okay, just, just putting it on the record.
I, I, um, just, I did, I did speak to the chair of women who, um. Uh, the county playing board and just ran through the project with her and she's, and she explained to me that it doesn't matter how good your project is. If it's, it's just if it has variances in, you know, that district.
They have their boilerplate reasons, they put in every application.
They deny, and she, we had a nice conversation about. The rain gardens and the drainage system and I explained all that to her, but she said, it doesn't matter. It still has to be denied, so.
The E C B, um. They also had a concern about making sure that the rain gardens are maintained, you know, um, perpetually. Lance, is there an actual stormwater agreement for something such as this, not for this?
Not for this size, if it was triggering the typical size in terms of disturbance and all that, then. Town would require a stormwater maintenance agreement, but for. Single-family homes, residential construction.
Maintain projects or not.
Difficult to do it, and it's, it's not that we, the town hasn't considered it, they have. But it becomes a tracking issue and maintenance. Issue for the town to try to then figure out how they want to impose these improvements, I mean, so long term, since they have not yet figured out how to do that. I mean, smaller projects of the size.
Does the board feel that? Possibly some language should be. On the plan or something to the effect that there's the homeowners, property owner responsibility to. Ensure the, uh, the maintenance of the, uh. Rain gardens. So that they function as designed. I mean, it's, it's a bit on the plan, but.
We talked about it a lot with rain gardens.
We are, and maybe. We should be talking more about it. I think.
Chuck, so. Kind of cool thing about that is if it's, if it's a condition. Then, I had this conversation with code enforcement today, it's not particular to this property, I think we can all rest assured it's going to be maintained pretty well. Um, but conditions of the violation of a planning board condition. Is a violation of town code which allows it to be enforced. Through the notice of violation, order to remedy. And appearance ticket at town court, yes, that's what I was talking about it because of.
Same job, yeah.
But so if you add it, then thirty years from now, if they, they're clogged up and somebody else owns it. Code enforcement officer considering violation. It's dismissed.
Well, I, I don't think we're saying we're going to put a. Procedure on the plan as to how to be maintained, this, just that. The applicant, the homeowner, the property owner be aware that these things require maintenance and. Uh. If for any reason there is a problem, and I'm sure this property it would not be. Uh. You know, there's something that we can point to and say. If it's on the plan, you've got to maintain it, clean it up. Clean it out. Break it out, do whatever you have to do, I don't. You feel?
Yeah, makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I, you know, I. Lance, I'm sure you can come up with, and they'd be placed on the. Plan as if back to the rain gardens have to be maintained.
Yeah, I would say that we would say stormwater mitigation measures in, including rain gardens. Are to be maintained. To their. To remain functional as designed.
Then as a standard, then on their.
I think generally can refine the knowing.
I think we still.
I know, yes, yeah.
Okay, good.
Said it, we said it.
Um. So that takes care of one of the E C B's concerns, uh, they could, they were concerned about lighting. Uh, they were hoping that you could get under the twenty-five event. Impervious, but. Uh, the C B A, I, certainly we understand. What the conditions are out there, we understand, but. If any idea on the pea gravel, what percentage of the lot would be? Are we talking? Three percent, three percent?
But I think so. But it, it reduces by about a half percent.
Oh, half percent, yeah. Okay.
What's the minus?
But again, the C B A.
The C B A said.
Variance was the twenty-eight.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's one point five seven.
Uh, the A committee found no loss of ag lands that resolved this project. Um, it's in the scenic view shed, but I think we discussed that along with the shoreline guidelines. I think we felt comfortable. A couple of years ago and you also feel comfortable now, I assume that, uh. Certainly won't affect the, uh. You should. Dump the lake or fill the lake. Uh, Lance, M R B, you had, my note says drainage issues missing. Something about, you remember what your.
So I normally had a comment letter, but I did talk to Costage and Bear about our comment letter, I did receive a response letter from them. I believe the mitigation measures have proposed and then ultimately reflected on revised plans will address those issues.
Okay, and you do have it as a condition. That your, your comments be addressed. Fletcher had no comments. Uh. Mike Murphy had. He had a letter and, and I think he responded.
Yeah, they're responsible.
No, I think both those, there was nothing there that couldn't be resolved. Alrighty. Board have anything else? Anybody in the audience like to address the board regarding this application? If not, I think we're ready to move forward. Uh, this is a, an unlisted seeker action, so, uh, someone want to take. We do have a part one and a part two filled out by. The town by M R B. Of the applicant acknowledged that. It is in a wetland, here a water body. That's the only, I think the only concern in terms of, uh. Any of the attributes related to seeker. Okay, somebody give me a motion on the unlisted action for the seeker.
I'll make a motion to approve a seeker resolution with an unlisted action. Uh, at four eight eight five County Road sixteen on C P N twenty-three dash one forty-seven. Non-significance.
I'll second.
Okay, motion second for discussion. Very none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post. Okay, let's move on to the site plan cell.
I'll make a motion to approve the single-stage site plan for forty-eight eight five County. Sixteen. With seven plus one.
Yes, so we have the seven standard, well, which has become pretty much a standard list of. Of conditions which are basically reiter- revising the plans to address. Comments received, um, and then identifying the variances that would have been approved on the plans, the ones that we added, I added three.
Okay.
Um, eight was that. No lighting improvements are proposed as part of this application, therefore not permitted as part of this application. Number nine. Um, an approval from Canada Gold Lake County Sewer District regarding the design. And improvements of the Forest Main slash Center Sewer. Is to be provided to the town and then I have. Three options prior to signatures, prior to building permit, prior to C F O. Typically, we have done prior to C F O, didn't know that. The fact that they're still working on, relying if that matters to the board or not, but those are the three options.
Uh, in this case, wouldn't the C F O be maybe a little leak?
Think so, being that we don't have the design necessarily.
Only, only problems. So, okay with the applicant?
I'll, I'll second that.
Good, right, and building permit, and then the last. The last condition as referenced was the note regarding stormwater mitigation and maintenance.
Any further conditions? Do I get a second to a man's? All right, motion second for discussion. Not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Very good.
Nice to see you all. Come again soon when you're ready to light the tenants' court.
Yeah. Okay. Bye, folks.
See you, see you later.
Okay, we have, uh, C P N twenty-four. Double oh one, four twenty-four, application for Brian Miller. Brian wins the prize for the first application for twenty twenty-four, uh. It's a lot of automatic fruit. Uh. Ryan's hoping to, uh. Demolish an existing house over on the Lakeview Lane. And there's also an detached garage, he's knocking down. And he's going to replace it with a new home and attached garage. Good evening, Brian, how are you?
They didn't do anything. So, this is my first time through. Planning what in the process, so forgive me if it's not a college presentation.
We're always.
You're doing good so far.
Always nice when I'm in your percentage.
Thank you, um, yeah, as you said, our, our proposal is to, um. demolish existing house and. Detached garage and reconstruct a new home, detached garage. Um, turning on the same, uh, we're going to utilize. Probably fifty, sixty percent of existing foundation. And as part of the, the reconstruction, we're going to pull. House back from shoreline, right now. House back from shoreline, right now we're encroaches in the set connection, we'll look for that also be. You know, within the setback. Um on the garage side. Uh we're pulling that back from the street, we're improve that setback, we don't quite get to. Um it's a full setback there, but it's a pretty. Tight block there and uh, but it improves that quite a bit. Um we didn't need any variances for this project to go forward. We, you know, I I. In my bachelor lecture guidelines, and I think I'm achieving that and. Let's see, they'll say here, oh, we also slightly reduced the lack coverage in this. It um. It was actually, like you know, looking about that, it was kind of constrained. The size of the house instead of just getting bigger and bigger, um then I think we achieved everything we wanted to achieve with that. Um. This is a, this site plan was revised, there's a revised site plan. From the comments. This one? Uh so, no, go go up and just change for the. Be slow down a little bit.
It's in the way I.
That's the kind of responses, slow down a little bit. The, I think I did another proposed site plan, I. That down very, very long. Resting though.
This one?
Yeah. I don't think I did it correctly.
Yeah, I think you revised it on two seven.
Yeah, they did, so that, yeah, this is revised, this is. Accounting all address uh received. It doesn't really change. Siding of the house much, but very similar to say. Uh and then the other, I guess, major piece, I know, there's. For removing for trees. It wasn't even no for trees.
You wanna point to this tree?
Yeah, there's.
Just so we're clear, it's it's three, there's there's smaller trees and a lot here moving into the house.
In fact. This is like dirt, it's no rest, but it's from the start there, but. Where the house, the foundation line is this, this is here, so we wind the house a little bit here, stay within the outside. Boundary, but um within up to feet of these trees, it will be already now. And then right here is a pretty large willow. Um that we really like to take down, it's it's very close to everything. We had willows, it's, the great trees that drop in the distance, it would be that close to everything we have here. The root system grows from top to ground. The the tree breaks off and falls quickly. So I also have. Uh elevation of the river in from your way.
When you uh remove the trees, you uh. Run stumps and.
Yeah, it all came down to. So, you know, existing, this is a willow, here, there's a really nice maple here. Um that lacking this, it's.
That stays.
That stays. It's starting to go over kind of the willow, and it starts to take over that maple and get shaded and. Starts to, and more than that, and I didn't talk to this neighbor there. And I asked him about this, and he said, yes, please. So that, and this is, you know, that's, you know, above that, you know. So that's the willows rendering. Um preserving the maple here. Replacing this as an art device that will fill in here. Um native paintings on the house. And uh the roof fridge will go into the travel system.
Beside your house.
It's uh slightly under twenty-five.
Under twenty-five, but it's twenty-five, under. Um one eight four nine two. Thank you. Um. Fractions. I would kind of agree with, I was out there at your house the other day, uh it's a big tree to come down that. One willow. Uh the drainage, can you better explain it? You're not doing anything different than anybody else down here on this road, but. You know, one thing, I wanna make sure that your drainage is draining into the infiltration and not straight to the lake.
Correct, so there's, there'll be a cross. There's string on the driveway here at a little point. They're all pitched down to here and down to there, they capture the drywall here. This will, this will pipe down through the connecting leaders from the roof to another drywall here, so there's two. There, like from here, and then I have an overflow system that. When you approach any of the properties. And then this side, it just says roof mirrors here, it's from the town to the drywall. Voice server, this is back, the houses and the buildings are.
Do you have any French drain built into that at all, any type of?
No.
How comfortable or how engineered is it to handle? Without a washout, in unless you have a big rainy. You know, a sheet flow into the lake.
Yeah, yeah, um. Pleasure to have it run through all the calculations on this, I I really proportioned this to similar. Properties that have been. You know, built and.
So your neighbor, just a couple of houses up, just recently came to the board with the exact same thing. Uh and we requested that. Um. They use a French drain system so that it's a dry well that went to French drains.
Okay.
So that you could infiltrate before you got to your overflow. So.
Yeah, so extend off the the. Drywall system with the French drain. And you have a greater amount of portion of.
Right, and then overflow.
Yeah, and you also have, and there is a part, there'll be a stone. You know, depth below the drain too, that that infiltrates more. Yeah, that that's.
Do you have details on that? Sorry. No, I was gonna, I was gonna say, you have details of the drywall in terms of.
Yeah, there's there, I think the last one. Pretty typical system. Comes out from the drains, there's into the drywall here, the stone around it.
And what's the, what's the size of that drywall, Brian?
These are, yeah.
So, what play how deep, how wide?
Four feet deep and two feet nine.
Oh, yeah, right.
And this is what you're asking right here.
Correct. To use that French.
And then with the. And even if that, yeah, the value system needs. A way to.
Thank you. Color, siding, and set gray, gray blue?
Yeah, a gray blue, a uh a hurdy. A board siding, it's an important siding.
You're uh. By in the children landscaping. Uh does that have a schedule? So.
Everybody. Uh you're. And then a hydro engine. On your side, this is a, this is a neighbor canyon here, you know. And then these are. A combination of uh percy and. Home flowers here. And then there is the pericy, the home flowers and some blackheads.
Uh would some of those be seasonal or are they? Yeah, but I mean, are they? Well, obviously, black and suzans aren't gonna be flowering in.
Right, they'll be in spring, in the spring. Uh hydrangea, and all your, these are, they need. Hydrangea, they have the white flowers.
Yeah, you cut those back?
Yeah.
I guess. I'm just thinking.
This is a, you know, or this is a grass, very grassy wood.
So during the winter area, uh winter, winter time, essentially that bed would be. Pretty barren.
In here, the the grasses will still be there.
Oh, the garden of whitey, yeah, I'm just saying the uh. The group, the view out, or the landscaping out in front of the.
Yeah.
And you had the tree. It's a little better. How's he with the, his species? They're fine? Uh speaking of the ECB. You did update the elevation. It's which they had requested. Uh. They asked that you uh. Maybe you wanna do this on your own volition is make sure that you protect that maple tree in terms of its roots.
It is, it it'll be actually, so.
Pretty far from the house.
Pretty far from the house, and that with most landscape, but the current foundations here. Fulfilling this side of this, there really be no excavation. Um you know, minimal for the paper, which is very shallow. This is slightly down the hill and trees, so. But yeah, the tree, I absolutely do not want to lose that tree. And if you go back, it is outside area, the area disturbance and our our. So that's.
Okay. Uh Murph had, uh our CEO had a question about the drywall and the search charge to the drywall. Did you see his review at all? I think it's similar to what we were helping to argue with. I detailed spec.
Oh, yeah, yes, for that, it's. That was an original plan, so, yeah, I did it, I did see this.
And you have your color as a condition. So you're. Actually lessening the nonconformity. Compared to what's out there now. Ward, are you comfortable with the discussion on the shoreline guidelines, anything else you feel? Needs to be uh.
Actually, I'd like to commend you on paying attention to the questions that were coming up in the process. Because we see. Professional organizations that often don't look at that, if you're doing that.
Sure.
I was hoping to only go through those ones, but.
He even supplied the Lakeview Property uh. Yeah. Association bylaws.
Super, super impressive, eh?
Yeah, usually we have to go look at.
That being said, just out of curiosity more than anything, why would, on your original site plan, which has been revised and. This is no longer on it, why were there proposed variances?
I didn't, initially I thought I might need some because you've just been.
Overabundance of caution, and the code enforcement zoning officer said you don't need fiction. Just wanted to make sure.
You're still nonconforming, but you were.
Yeah.
Okay, the county sort of district just said you're gonna have to file for a new sewer permit when you uh. Build the new house. MRB did not review this.
Yeah, I did.
Oh, you didn't?
It was three minor comments. Based on the revised.
Oh, that's the one that came in, uh yeah, that's.
Some of those were addressed.
Yeah, exactly. It's a conversation. Okay, anybody in the audience uh wanna address the board regarding this application? On Lakeview Lane? If not, I think we're ready to move on. Uh. There is the ship of clearance needed, and we got a bald eagle out there, huh, Brian?
I have seen it, we've actually, right now we live up there, called her, you know, I've seen it, but.
Okay. Uh. I don't know what that does as far as your. Instruction schedule.
Existing house, so we're not, and we're. It's not, I, in fact, I'd say the ship will end that are really not.
Not lookable all. I think the last one in that area said it was known.
Yeah, and it's not, right, right.
Okay, let's move on, uh since it's a take two seeker. We'll take that in concert with the site plan. Mr. Miller, so someone wants to. Address that?
Sure, I will to accept CPN twenty-four oh one. And a take two. Seeker stumbled with the site plan to. Land to the tabar six.
I have the six, I would like to note that number six. As in regards to the, for homes that are being built. Code enforcement officer asked for us to have the note regarding lot stabilization. To be completed prior to the issuance of CFO, so I have that on there. And then number seven, I added the stormwater maintenance. Maintenance now. For the dry wells in this instance.
To ensure also that they use another note to use that they use the um.
The French drain. So then that'll be.
Number eight for the French drain. Okay, for the eight condition.
And making, I mean, just a note to the applicant too, that that number six. Certificate of occupancy seeded in all or at the town's discretion. Uh I just wanna say that because if if it's done in the wintertime and you can't seed. And you wanna move in. You just have to ask for the town's discretion. Okay. Uh any further description? Anything, Lance, I don't wanna be picky, but uh the findings were all brief.
Yeah, I made a note, I said, um, what is this? So. I have comments to add, which is a lot of the comments that have been received by staff that you go over, so yeah, I have to add to that. I apologize for that.
No, that's alright. So you'll take care of that, so, but the uh. Motion and second is as stated, uh for the discussion, if not, all in favor? And I. Post. Hey. Good luck, Mr. Miller. Good to see you, thanks for coming in. Okay. Next to the art agenda. CPN twenty-four. Zero zero three. Alan Lupton. Uh for property forty-nine sixty-one Island View Drive. Looking for a site plan, we will to construct a ground pool. With a patio area. You're not Alan.
I'm Brooke, this is why he's online.
Alan is joining us remotely, I see. So welcome to the Lupton, so tell us what you're gonna do out there.
Uh Alan, you're here.
He's muted, yeah, there he is.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Oh my gosh.
Alan, uh you you are Brooke, you just give us an overview of your intent.
Can you hear me?
Yes. We can hear you. You can't hear us, maybe.
Hello.
You're good.
I've lost audio, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
We can hear you.
Hello.
Hi, can you hear us?
You might not.
I know, he has more of the details. Alan, are you there?
We can, I think, I think the board has somewhat the gist.
Wait, I think he might do that. Alan, are you there?
Oh my gosh.
We hear you.
Hot mic, got a hot mic. Uh, see.
I can try to fill in blanks.
He doesn't let me say anything about you.
I can try to fill in the blanks while we wait for him to figure this out.
Okay, well. You are here, you guys are. Right at the far edge of town to the north.
Most north property.
It's way further. And in the city.
Half in the city, yeah.
So the southernmost city.
Yes.
We treat you best. We treat you best. City is. Alrighty, um. You, uh, I guess Alan went to the ZBA back in February.
Yes.
Uh, to get a variance.
Which was granted.
Just granted. And. So you're on the boundary, okay, you want to put a pool. On the northeast side of your property there.
Yeah, the water in that area, the lake is. Pretty rough, um.
Yeah, I, uh, he, Alan's probably pictures, yeah.
Yeah.
Is it just happening to get, that's where ponds, pools? Or is it?
I think it's because it's the northern point, it's incredibly mucky. You sink right in, um, by mid-July, the seaweed is at a level you can't really even. Swim in the water, um, without, it just being pretty disgusting.
You also get a lot of runoff.
We get a ton of runoff, which I think he provided pictures of, um, coming off of West Lake. That come down the, the hill. Uh, I think if you go into, I'm not sure which attachment it would be. The, the city did put a, uh, circle of drain. Ditch in, but it seems to not on at all, right, like one section, which I think he. Divided.
Yeah, I'm back in. You're doing a great job, you're doing a great job on.
Trade your will.
All right, glad you're here. You want to provide all your knowledge you have?
Yeah, so as, as Brooke was saying, if you look at the way the water flows, and I don't know how many folks had the opportunity to go down to the site. But it runs along the left side of the driveway, there's a ditch that the city put in there. They take it around behind the barn into Atwater Meadow. And then when it gets into Atwater Meadow, it, the ditch ends and it just disperses into the meadow. Then it comes back in over by our, our dock that goes with. Eight sixty one West Lake Drive, which is the wooden dock, um, down at the bottom. So that's what those pictures are kind of showing, you know, we have a pretty level lot. Um, and, um, you know, the, the area that we're placing this is kind of at a higher point. Um, in the lot, if you will, so we don't think it's going to contribute at all to any type of drainage issue. Um, but again, the, the water that Brooke was speaking of is, is really water coming off. Middle Cheshire and West Lake and coming right down Island View Drive.
There are pictures in here, I just.
So that.
Oh, right there, maybe that one, you mentioned.
Yeah. So to put that behind this, that water course is not going to be affected or changed by what you're doing out there, right?
Correct, correct, it won't have any impact. Right, and, and so the images that you're looking at kind of show the existing water conditions, particularly in July and August, which is. You know, folks who've been down there, we're the northernmost property on the west side of the lake, so it's not like folks are really. Going past our house in a boat or anything, you might come by kayaking, but we're really far up there, it's pretty shallow and muddy. And as you can see, the, you know, the, uh. The weeds get very high, you know, probably by mid-July, it, it becomes sort of unswimmable. Um. So, you know, what, what we wanted to do was to place a pool, it's six feet in the deep end, three and a half feet in the shallow end. We're orienting it in such a way that we're kind of taking advantage of the contours of the land, which kind of minimizes, so the deep end is to the north. If you will, and the shallow end is closer to the house, to the south. And so we kind of minimize the amount of excavation and grading and stuff that we have to do. Um, it's a fiberglass in-ground pool, and so they backfill it with gravel and sand. Um, and again, keeping in mind that the actual surface water of the pool is tied into the sewer system, so we're not contributing. Runoff where you have the surface of the pool, it would just really be the pool deck. That is the new, um, area that's being added. And the only time you really tie into the sewer, so to speak, or run, is when you're backwashing the pool. It's not actively going in or out of the sewer unless someone is physically there cleaning the pool and backwashing it.
What would happen if the pool needed to be drained?
Yeah, it would drain to the sewer. You just run the pump. I mean, I don't, I don't know that that's, I don't know that we would ever intentionally do that unless you have a major maintenance issue, because it'd be very expensive to drain the pool. Um, and replace all the water, but that's how you would do it.
Let's see. Sewer district except full water. They do?
Uh, I was down there this weekend and I noticed a number of trees that you have marked right now.
Yes. Yeah, so we actually just had. Three different folks come through, arborists come look at it, because obviously if we're going to do the work, we want to make sure those are very large. Uh, mature oak and hickory trees, as you looked at the ones that were marked. Um, they are. Disease, they have problems with ants, so like in the bottoms, you can see the bottom of the two trees closest to the dock are sort of missing. And then the largest tree, which we really don't want to lose, um, but it's reaching way over the house. And it's many of the limbs up high are dead. Um, so again, we were strongly encouraged that we need to take the trees down that are marked because they're. Um, dead, now again, it's our belief from the arborist that. The other trees that are there will be healthier and be stronger as a result of, you know, clearing out. Some of these other trees that are competing with it, so we liked a very wooded. Um, feel of that, you know, we've owned the property since twenty sixteen. And we've spent a lot of money feeding and, um, treating those trees, and unfortunately. You know, again, um, that particularly that biggest one, um, we really have to deal with it now. And they, they added the others to the list, so there's a total of five that are kind of spaced out around the property.
Ones. Very good, I was just gonna ask what the plan to replace those would be?
There, there is no plan, I mean, the, these are massive trees, they are. Um, the other trees that surround them would continue to fill in and grow. Um, I mean, they gotta be, this, the one tree that I'm mentioning has got to be six feet in, uh, circumference or more. And the other trees neighboring it are similar size. So again, we're just taking the one in the middle out that's diseased. And then the other two are smaller that are diseased, they're in a grove of probably six of them in that little grove. And then there's one up by the driveway and one up by the barn. That, you know, if you look closely, they're missing their tops, they're all rotted and broken off. And those two are silver maples, those are not oak or hickory. And so if you look at the picture that was showing, you can see, you know, from a shoreline guideline perspective, it is very, very shaded and sheltered. Um, and it would honestly be, we would, all right, it's our intent to plant. Some like tall grasses on the opposite side, so not the lakeside of the pool, but along the back of the pool fence. Um, because that's where we have sun, there's really no sun along the front of that stone wall. It's hard to even get grass to grow because those trees are so full and mature that are down there on the lakeside.
You want to scroll to. A landscape plan if there is one?
Yes, it is. Can you pull up the picture? There's actually a picture that shows.
It was a picture, yeah, it showed like a elevation view of the.
Yeah, right there.
Yeah, so. And so if you look, you can't even see the existing stone wall, it's all kind of shaded and covered in through that area. Um. So it's, it's a very wooded. Um. Parcel. And again, we believe that this being a flat, you know, a patio. With nothing that really sticks up above the ground other than the pool fence. Which would be black, it would, again, kind of melt into that shadow and you're not really going to. Um, you know, have a, um, a nuisance view, so to speak.
There was another picture that showed the house. And the approximate location of the, uh. Pool on that. Okay. So that wall to the left. Will continue across the front. Will be elevated. There'll be a walkout, your hot tub. Is your hot tub existing or?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so that'll remain, and then you walk to the, uh. Coping area, the patio area around the pool. Board, uh. Why don't we have this up here, shoreline guidelines, are you? Have any? Concerns, anything else that you feel? Should be done to comply with the guidelines?
Kind of wish it, because I don't know how high that's going to be off the ground and.
It doesn't seem too much. The same height. As the read here, the wall comes straight across. So, yeah, but you'll have the fence. That's what, a four-foot fence?
Yeah, it's, I think code is fifty-two inches or fifty-four inches. So it's the typical black aluminum, um, fence, pool fence with two gates.
Yeah, you had a detail.
Yeah, I think it's on the, on the drawing, it shows the touch seat of it. Maybe on the last page there, yep.
Okay, the county planning board, uh, recommended, you know, the variance, but the variance was received. Uh, regarding the site plan, they said it was exempt. Uh, so they really had no comments. Themselves. Um. ECB did have a concern about how the bull was, the pool is going to be discharged. And you're saying it's going right into the sanitary sewer?
Correct, I think that's the town code in the RLD. And when you read, just, just in, as a side note, when you read about that, I, I didn't realize it, but most. Um, areas like in the southwestern US and whatever, they discharge all their pools into the sewer because they don't want to lose the water. Um, so it's more common in other parts of the country, too.
Is there a detail on the wall?
The, the, the plan is again to take the, we don't want to remove the existing wall, the plan is to match in with the current wall. And continue straight across, so it's basically, you know. Um, one to two large stacks of boulders going straight across at that same elevation.
I don't know, yeah, if, um, landscaping would. Do anything wonder. Um.
I don't think you'd see it now, I don't think.
I don't think it would grow.
Well, you got the shadows.
It really is.
I was down there the other day and it was. Yeah. And your guy that's fixing your dog, he, he's like. Yeah, all my tools are tied to strings because you didn't want to lose them in that mucky said.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, something goes in the lake there, you do not find.
You, you, you're never getting it back.
We've lost several things in the lake there that you, you searched time long, you just can't find it.
Uh, sewer. So direction. Uh, Murph had a question about removing the older pool location, I think you. Did that with the revised. So that's, uh. The comment from. Sewer district. You had a couple neighbors that, uh, supported your application. Uh, we saw. You said the pool's going to be six foot, the three and a half feet or five feet, so you're going to give.
It's, it's, uh, six feet in the deep end and three and a half in the shallow. If I remember correctly, it's fourteen wide at its widest point and thirty feet long.
So you're not going down that deep?
No, and it's. It's not intended to be a diving pool or anything, it's, it's more, you know, for young kids and stuff to be able to swim and get in the water where they can't in the lake.
Board, anything else?
Mister Chairman. They had made a comment about using grasses in landscaping, I would urge native grasses because there's a lot of invasive ones.
Be, be in particular about the grass.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, okay, I think we agreed that no landscaping would be required in front of the, uh, wall. I think, uh, Alan mentioned about putting the grass up on the north side outside the fence.
Yes, so just to clarify, where you have that, where it shows the concrete. Um, the, uh, that round circle for topsoil stockpile, kind of from, from that corner. Of the pool headed towards the house, and then along the backside of the house, we would replace. You know, the landscaping that's there is original, it's been there for fifty years probably, so we would replace that. Clean it all up, and then the pool equipment goes behind the house in this corner, so we would landscape the pool equipment so you don't see it. So it's really those three sides, if you will, of that, of the north-facing side of the house.
Okay, understood. All right, anything else? Anybody in the audience? Want to address the board regarding this application? If not, we will move on. Uh, the seeker is a, uh. Type two. So, uh, someone wants to take. Both of them, seeker and site plan. I'm at it.
I'll take two and, uh. Make a motion for a secret resolution type two action for approval. Uh, at four nine six one Island View Drive, CPN twenty four dash zero zero three. With a site, single-stage, uh, site plan approval resolution at same address with, uh, any? Additionals there?
No, I don't think so, I think six.
You want to mention the landscaping that's not on the plan? That he stated?
Uh, grasses?
Yeah.
To note that on the plans, is that the condition to note about the, the grass planting areas outside the fence to the north and west of the.
Yes, this is. Stated to be.
I'll second that motion.
Can you want to page down to their? Revision data that plan, but now it'd be. Move to the right, over in the title block. Uh, yeah, what's up there? Okay, up there where it says revisions. I had, I had one eleven.
Yeah.
One eleven? Show that, Lance.
Yep.
Okay, is your vision date? Proving. Okay, for discussion.
I think I'll. Probably be muted.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I don't think you would take offense to that.
Did he just dinner? Grow a stomach, uh, all right, no further questions? You got the eight conditions, I'm sorry.
I have seven.
Seven.
Added the one about. The grass, you updated identified the grass areas.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
You get to make the motion, so.
Scott. Because the same. Well, you did.
All right, thank you, Alan, thank you, Brooke.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right, thanks.
Hope you'll have an end to the summer.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving along. We're off to, uh, approving the minutes from the twenty seventh. Someone give me a motion?
I moved this up, number twenty seven.
Okay.
Oh, second.
Thank you. For the discussion, if not, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Corinne. Nice job. Uh, no, surely so let us a credit release. Uh, we're from the town board. Uh, did you all see Jared's email regarding? Uh, he'd like to have a meeting of the boards.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Uh. I'm fine with that. I think it'd be good. I think the only question then would be which month? You had mentioned May or June? I would, I would probably prefer June.
I think they've decided last night's meeting that would be June. I think that was the consensus if that works for you guys.
This June works for everyone? Would be, what is that, the second Monday?
Yes.
This is June tenth.
June tenth?
June tenth.
Okay, I will let Jared know that we discussed it and uh, we'd like to.
Should we pose any questions to you first? You bring out the board, board out of the board or?
Well, I think it's called to you, right? As many of the board members can be there, should be there.
Yeah, I'll be there. I've got a list started.
Maybe you should be giving you the question.
Uh, will be there. I will, I will not be at the June eleventh meeting, but I will be at the June tenth. I will be at the June tenth, but I will not be at our.
Seven o'clock, there's there, there's there.
Our planning board.
Oh, in June?
Yes, in June.
Six P M, yes.
Six P M. Uh, Mr. Attorney, is it, would it be okay for us to share questions?
I think that would be very appreciated.
Okay, so that's. Violate sunshine. Anyway, okay, we're not delivering, we're just.
Yeah.
Coming up with questions.
Yeah.
Okay, so your question, my questions. Amanda's, Mark's, Scott, any questions you may have or any issues you'd like to discuss? Uh, and if you, I guess give them to me, I'll give them to Jared. So they have a heads up before the meeting. So, it'd be good. Okay, uh, anything on special projects? If you have the time, could you put together a solar newsletter?
I'm working on it. I haven't worked on it.
Okay, we uh. I did put together a article for the current newsletter regarding site, our site design manual, so. If you had any problems with it too late.
It's my ideas for you.
It's going to the masses.
Okay. I just saw something that um. I have it saved on my board computer um, from the RBJ. It's really did something like four initiatives. I just skimmed it really quickly. I wanted to save that for later, but yeah.
Yeah, I would remind everyone too to think about how your special projects can get into code. You know, some of the things we've been talking about, how already changed it. You're already in it?
Mine are already there. Need to do for charters, it's in code.
He's got it. Take it.
Okay, look in uh, oh, education, last call for uh, planning federation, sir, check it. Scott's gone. Yeah, what opening? Not, you don't want to, you don't want to have Scott there by himself. Turn to losing. Tim couldn't go. He's uh, he had a, they're going away or something. Well, okay. Might be solo. Well, I think. You going, Chris?
No.
Oh.
You're not going?
My kids got us.
Uh.
Yeah.
Our next meeting is the twenty sixth. Uh, so the. Late agenda, don't get used to it. Because. PRC next week, we have fourteen.
Probably, of course.
Applications, two, two of which are CBA. Three of which. Couple S U Ps, couple special use subdivision and. So, uh, we'll folder two of them on Monday, but as far as. On the twenty sixth, we have uh, site plan for uh, new apartment building over on Moran Road. Near the creative college. And mighty, mighty T-Boba. Put the sign up in their new locations. Your next year, always.
Which is their old.
Elmer Penny's?
Yeah.
They went back, they were done.
Okay, so we got a sign and a.
They're going back.
Site plan next time. Any uh, further discussions? You said you're talking to Murph about if someone disregards a condition of approval?
The thing to do is submit a written complaint to the code enforcement officer on written forms.
Yeah.
Or for cloud permit, excuse me, and they will investigate and uh. If it is a violation of a condition of approval of the planning board, it is a violation of town code, they will. Order a remedy.
Is it submitted on behalf of the board or submitted on behalf of the individual? It would be you personally.
Well, I think, so having asked the similar question before than the previous code enforcement officer, I basically told them there's no re, no resource to enforce this. So if they receive a complaint, then they would likely do something about it. But when I asked the question long ago about all the conditions that we put on related to trees and all the other stuff.
Mm-hmm.
And the reaction was along the lines of, yeah, there's nobody. You know, that's. Or sportsmanship and, and I don't think that current code enforcement feels that way. Uh, I, I don't think they're out looking tonight. I mean, our, our code enforcement, our agents. Drive around town looking out the window for violations and that's not what they're supposed to do. There is, but unfortunately, they are going to investigate and enforce.
And I, and I believe they would have done too. I think, yes, yes, but it doesn't. Let's face it, we're, we're probably the only ones that might ever remember.
Yep, yes.
Unless there was somebody here that was against the project. So I can probably assure you that anything that happens across the street from me. So I wouldn't notice. I think Lance and I are having an awesome time learning about water regulations.
What, what Mike Murphy said to me today, as part of this conversation was. Make sure they submit a complaint via cloud permit because that way it's, I'm notified and I track it and. You know, it's, it's in the system. If not, the best I can offer is that I'll get to it when I get to it. Um, you know, mentioning something and passing to you guys. You know, with the best of intention, you're going to try to, but in the pub permit, they'll, you know, there's a mechanism to track it and they'll get it done. And I think, I think the current team is actually doing a great job trying to track some of that stuff and it's, I mean, just to see. Using it as an example, if you do take over the project on three sixty four right now, you'll see the impact of. Uh, what can happen when something doesn't go the way that it's supposed to. Uh, and that's a great example and they're all over it and they're, they're trying to remedy that, you know. But uh, I think that current group is really good. They're responsive to it very much. You're talking about the one we talked about, I think.
Yeah, in this, in this situation, it was a condition of approval. A note, a note was to be placed on the plan to the effect that. Uh, the, his trees will not be touched and if they were, if they had to be touched, they'd have to come back to the planning board for review. The trees got touched.
Yeah, and I mean.
More than touched.
Mike was, Mike told me, make sure they, could you ask them tonight? You called me to tell me you guys are probably going to ask about whatever this application was.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and please make sure to tell them, submit a complaint via cloud permit. Um, I think it's important. I mean, I just saw Amanda look at a picture of it and go, whoa. I mean, you guys thought about this. There's a reason you put a, a condition in there.
Oh, yeah.
And not enforcing it.
Yeah.
You know, you know. Code enforcement doesn't know every condition of approval, but you guys do. Um, and when you see it, I think you should.
Is this?
The complaint, so the development staff.
This particular home ready to be occupied? This is, got a CFO yet or?
I don't know the answer to that.
I got, I would certainly hope that before CFO is issued, that all. Conditions, you know, all requirements had been met before CFO would issue.
Chuck and I would hope so too, and I think that's probably the goal, but. I feel like we had this conversation probably in a lake with metters. Something, but I, I don't know that that's feasible, practical.
Well, the other option is we require a conservation easement, replacing the property. That ensures that the trees stay and remain and perpetually and. Because I know, you know, after the CFO was issued on this property, uh, he could go in and take the trees.
Nope.
I mean, he can do it all the time.
And while it's a violation of code.
Because it was a condition.
It's a written condition in the planning board. So stuff like that, I mean, quite frankly. Uh, conservation easement to preserve trees. Um, and. Writing it as a condition, in this case. Theoretically, it has just about the same effect because the town still has to enforce it. Um, and the town, unless. You know, unless raised through other circumstances, enforces via complaint, investigates and then enforces via complaint. Um, that's long, that's longstanding town policy. Um. And it's effective for long, you know, when there's problem, people complain.
Okay. You want to file it?
I will, I, I, I'll do it tomorrow morning. I'll definitely do it.
I, I gotta say, since you all have cloud permit accounts, it is super simple. Just like it'd be two one for the tree clearing, so for that complaint.
If I see something on about, then I tell him about it, he tells me to file it.
Oh, yeah, otherwise, you know, he's getting stuff from left and right. He's got to have something for this.
Well.
He's got to have a system. I, I certainly agree with that, yeah.
Tracking and all that. It also eliminates any um. Any question as to motivation or who's doing favors for who or who's putting pressure on who. It's all tracked.
So I heard. Okay.
That's all, that's. That's funny.
I mean, the thing, Jack's my jewels is just, we spent so much time with this guy talking about those trees.
Oh, I remember.
Boy, and all, well, yeah, I've been leaving there, other than cutting the path to get the sewer down there. Uh, that's, and boy, we're not going to touch any of those and bam.
Does anybody have a copy of that site plan handy?
I found it.
Although, that's why. Computers.
I, I, I looked at the resolution and it's.
Yeah.
It was earmarked as a condition, yeah. Okay. You got it. You can be the bad guy.
Words like outrage and.
And he don't take care of it, Chuck or this guy.
That was my last job.
All right, anything else?
Kind of important.
Forty seven thirty, all right.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at seven twenty three P M.
I'm opposed. With, with you all, it's for one. Thank you all.